Everybody ready? Let's go. Here we go. Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the town council meeting of November 9th. Earlier today, we had an opportunity to see the new ladder truck. It was just terrific. And we also had the opportunity to get our annual pictures done. And I swear I did not break the camera this year. I did not, okay? So I'd like to call to order. The first item is the approval of the minutes of October 26th, 2020. Do we have a motion? Show me. Thanks, Ron.
Second.
Second by... Okay, and you got it, okay? And on paper? Thank you. Okay, that's done. Managers report, Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, because of the renovations to the council chambers, we are not being televised. The equipment is honestly too expensive for unwrapping and wrapping in the pretty dusty, not dusty environment, but it's a different environment back there. We're hoping to be back on for the 23rd. Camera folks couldn't be here before the 18th, and that's why we're not live. We are basically, we have audio file in the, right behind us, behind this plastic apartment that we're keeping, as well as Brendan's recording is here as well as best he can. So it's gonna be a little bit dicey. We'll do it the old-fashioned way, basically, just minutes that we approve. And I think it's important that you speak as loud as you can, just in case these mics are not quite working. You're on, but we're just kicking our fingers across to be recording. So that, one of the things I have requested tonight from Council of Vale is an update on surrounding community public cases, because I think so many people need to know what those are. Those will be in minutes. I would just share with you a few. Here in Cumberland, the total is somewhere between 54 and 67 cases. Cumberland Center is reported at 48 cases, and the Forside at 619. This comes right from the zip code file. If you have patience, and you click on it and pretend you know where you are geographically, you could get all the towns. Fowlton is at 189, Cape's at 107, Freeport's at 36, Durham at 102, Gray at 33, Gloucester at 14, Furling at 416, but remember, they too also have about 65,000 people. Tallow, 101, 105 cases, South Furling, 247, Wineland maybe four, and Yarmouth 3. So those will be part of the minutes, and those will be incorporated into the actual analysis, and those are the rest of today, recorded by the CDC. Before we go to public discussion, I do want to share with the council that on the main real estate listing, we have listed our properties for sale right now. And basically, what it says is that we will accept all good offers when the decision is made. George has been encouraging folks to basically write out their best proposal, and then after that, the council will, in executive session, review all those good proposals and basically decide what's best for the town of Cumberland. So that can range from a whole bunch of things, and we are not gonna tip our hands from a real estate perspective. So what I ask my own in the public discussion is that this is an item that we are basically still second offer, and we'll be accepting if the decision is first. But we don't get into a negotiation over the podium, but by the time all the offers are on the second first, the council will have a transparent view of every single offer that can be made. I think that's the best thing, and that's the best consideration for the council. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Bill. Much appreciated. The next item is public discussion, is for comments, as Bill said to you, for items that are not on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. And rebuttals are two minutes. So if you have a rebuttal to a comment, you have two minutes for that. And new business for further, will be for further business for, by the council, we have discussion on it, okay? You got the rules? Okay, I'm gonna open up the public discussion. Okay, thank you. Please state your name.
Yep. Good afternoon or good evening. My name's Eric Gagnon. I am with the Yarmouth Water District Superintendent. I sent an email over to you folks probably three, four hours ago, just kinda stating what I'm going to say today. You know, the Yarmouth Water District is very interested in that piece of property that's on Sweets Road that you guys listed this week, so I figured I would just come here and state how important that piece of land is to us. The Yarmouth Water District would like to express our interest in the gravel pit parcel on Sweets Road in North Yarmouth that was recently listed for sale. This parcel is extremely important to the protection of the community's water resource, and the district plans on making a strong offer to purchase it. The parcel in North Yarmouth's groundwater protection overlay zone, which specifies and protects areas that contribute and recharge the groundwater aquifer. The reason this parcel's in the zone is that it's adjacent to the district's property where two high-production wells are located. It's approximately 1,200 feet from the district's Rainsborough Well and 1,700 feet from the district's Estabrook Well, which together they supply 75% of the district's water capacity to over 3,000 residential, commercial, governmental, and industrial customers in Yarmouth and North Yarmouth. These wells also serve as an emergency water source for South Freeport and Cumberland. The district system has two interconnections in Cumberland that can be utilized in emergencies with coordination with the Portland Water District. Luckily, we don't use them that often, because things are pretty reliable. Acquiring critical properties follows the district's watershed protection plan as outlined in the district's master plan. Acquiring properties within and adjacent to the 200-day zone of influence helps eliminate potential contamination to the groundwater supply from septic influence, nitrates, pharmaceuticals, salts, and petroleum products that result from commercial and residential use and development. Please, I attached a map to that email, and you guys can take a look at it when you have time. If the district were to acquire this parcel to help protect the water resource, we would continue to allow access to the parcel for the community members who enjoy. We currently allow residents to access our property for hunting, fishing, trail walking, mountain biking, cross-country seeing, and we also work with Cumberland County Soil and Water Conservation District to provide education. We hope you consider the value of the water resource protection as you decide the sale of the property. The Yarmouth Water District strives to be good stewards of the water resource while also realizing the importance of community access to and enjoyment of the watershed protection land. Thank you for understanding the importance this parcel has for the future of the community's water supply to ensure safe and plentiful drinking water for the foreseeable future. And feel free to reach out if you guys ever have any questions. Again, we-
I have a question, Eric.
Yes.
Eric, you guys do a great job.
Thank you.
We made you a pretty good offer. We made you an offer that we wanna swap some land over here off Greeley Road-
Yep.
-for that land. It was a good deal for you, it was a good deal for us. You guys didn't follow through. And now we're looking like the bad guys, because we didn't hand it to you, and I guess I wanna hear from you.
Yep.
Why didn't you accept our deal? Why? I understand you've got plans for that, but there were other places in Yarmouth and North Yarmouth who are your service, who are your customers. I can think of the park down there off of Route 9, there were other places that, you know, all within the watershed, that you could, you could, all you needed to do was swap us this land. And we'd have a deal. We wouldn't be listing this on the open market. And, you know, I hope in the end you guys are up with it, but we're not gonna lose money. If we got a higher bidder, we're gonna take it.
I understand, yep.
So I guess I kinda wanna hear from you.
Sure.
Why didn't you accept the deal?
Yeah, so back in the 90s, Portland Water District was still utilizing those wells to provide water to Cumberland until they went on to the Sebagel Lake, the Sebagel Surface Water. At that time, they had really no more use for that. Needed some upgrading, chlorine gas and whatnot, so there wasn't any investment in a site, a site that's, a remote site like that. So they offered for us to buy it, and it is a already-developed site for us, so there's no permitting that we would have to do through the state to have that site permitted as a drinking water supply. We've actually been putting money into it to test the water quality, see if the screens, the well screens, and if the capacity's still there. And with some testing that we've done over the year, it's a very good site. The only other source that we have that's not part of our current aquifer is probably twice as far from our system on Mill Road in North Yarmouth. So the economics is better for the district to have that as the next in line. And that's really the reason why we couldn't, we couldn't give up that resource to protect the other, you know, the land, for the land swap as a totality. So an even swap just didn't make sense to us at the time, because we do have probably mid-range plans to bring that online. So we've already been putting money into that and whatnot. So that's, I guess, my best argument is that is a viable resource for the utility going forward, which, you know, allows us to have, you know, backup aquifer as well as secondary system.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your time, Eric.
Yep, no problem.
Eric, anything else?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yes? Yes, please.
Good evening. My name's Michael Booth. I was here a couple of weeks ago talking about this, this particular project, and just wanted to update the council. Since we submitted that letter to you a couple of weeks ago, we've actually canvassed the neighborhood and asked people their interest in this particular project, and actually provided to Mr. Shane, and I understand he distributed you a petition with 80 signatures of members of the community around there who are very interested in protecting that resource. We all understand you have a lot of different criteria for deciding ultimately where it's going, and we're not really asking you just to cart blank, give it to the district, that obviously they probably have to provide you a competitive bid. But we feel it's very important that the environmental impact of the decision you make is part of the, important part of the criteria in ultimately deciding what happens to that piece of land. You know, there's a big kind of social responsibility component to it. That's a very long-term, in 50 years, people are gonna look back and say, "I'm glad we protected that," if that's where that ends up. And we just wanted to bring that to your attention and convey to the council, the number of people who feel the same way in the community. It's actually kind of interesting, there's a lot of people who weren't even aware that Cumberland owned that, that they always, they thought the Water District owned it, because there's, nothing's happened there for so long, and they figured it was part of the whole complex back there. So that was the purpose of the petition, just to let you guys know, it's not just the five or six neighbors who are immediately abut the parcel, but it's the whole community around there who utilizes that area and is very concerned with the water, potential water quality impacts of that, any type of development on that site. So that was the intent of the petition. And you have a copy of it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
I have a question for you. Have you taken your concerns to the North Yarmouth Board of Selectment?
We haven't at this point. They are aware that that is going to be something that we address, you know. What we're trying to do are, obviously, the hopes would be that the district would end up with the parcel, and then it would, you know, the next step would be to go to them and convey the issues to them also. So it's, you know, it's kind of, which comes first? You guys ultimately have control of what happens to that parcel. If you decide, whatever you decide of it, if it isn't the Water District, we will bring our concerns to the council.
The reason I ask is if it's out for bid and it's a valuable property for North Yarmouth, I would think they might be part of the bidding process that, you know, for your community.
I can't speak for that, yeah.
Okay.
You know, this whole thing kinda came together relatively quickly. I know that the appraisal just came out a week ago or so.
Okay, thank you.
Are you looking for bids back basically in one?
Any other questions, Michael? No, Mr.-
Michael, I don't have a question of you, but I just wanted to set the record straight. The town of Cumberland enlisting this property, there's a misnomer here as far as the petition's concerned, which concerns me a bit. It says that they sell the parcel to the highest bidder. The reason that the format is what it is and it's being listed has to do with our concern about not only getting the best price we can for the property based on Cumberland's lights, 'cause obviously we respect the people we respect, and we also represent the people of Cumberland. We have to put that first. Having said that, the language that's in the listing was very carefully designed, I will say by me, with the acquiescence of the rest of the council. And basically, that language says that on December 1st, afternoon time, the council will take consideration of various offers, but that we reserve the right to consider those offers in a completely unfettered way, shall I say, which does not imply that we necessarily would take the highest bid. The implication of that, and the reason that I designed it that way, is so that we have an opportunity to take into consideration just exactly what your petition begs us to do, which is to look at all of the angles as far as the value to this town and also the protection of the aquifer. And we obviously don't wanna be bad neighbors to North Yarmouth, and we wanna do what we can to make sure that we do justice to that property, and so I wouldn't worry too much about somebody coming along and doing some dastardly deed on that property that's gonna affect the aquifer, because that's anything but our intent. But we also intend to obviously consider the bidding process in all of its facets, and that includes, there are other considerations in an offer. You have clauses that can be added that add value in various ways, so the price per se doesn't necessarily reflect what necessarily will be the answer as far as this council's concerned. And that should give you a little bit of ease.
George, I just wanna follow along with that same thing and give you some direction. You better go see the Board of Selectmen and light a fire under there, you know what? Because it will go a long ways showing purpose and intent. We've, as Mike has said, have showed what we want, so show, the town of North Yarmouth needs to show intent. And I urge you to go back and speak to them.
We appreciate both those comments. You know, the, as this thing has evolved, you know, there's been some communications, and I know at one point, there's an email that says, "North Cumberland is gonna sell this thing to the highest bidder." And, you know, I understand, we understand that was kind of the initial development of this thing, and as it has evolved, you know, George, you're working to very, very specific or not, you know, define that specific-
That could well, I'm not sure you understand what I'm saying.
Yes.
That could well end up being the case.
Right. No, I understand, but you're saying you're gonna look at all the criteria.
But council is fettered by that particular desire, shall we say, necessarily.
Yeah. And, you know, and we also, you know, talked about bringing the council, the council in North Yarmouth, and, you know, it's, when do you do that? And, you know, we didn't wanna get into this contest between you and them, and we appreciate the input of, you think that's important, that we bring them into this, that is sooner, you know, sooner than later, I guess is what you're saying. And we'll take that from your advisement.
There might be some ways that North Yarmouth is willing, may I speak, Mr. J- that North Yarmouth is willing to help the Yarmouth Water District acquire this piece of property, maybe some joint venture that would suit everybody's needs.
Yeah.
That's why, why, it's curious to me you haven't spoken to-
Well, and again, we didn't wanna kinda get in the middle of these negotiations between all these different parties. All we wanna do is express our concern as a neighbors and the butters for what this prop, you know, the potential value of this property as a resource. That's what we were trying to do, you know. We're walking a real fine line. We don't wanna be, you know, obviously, we would like it if they end up, if the Water District ends up with it. We don't wanna be in the middle of a negotiation, so to speak, 'cause we appreciate all the entities and what's involved with the negotiation of any type of, you know, real estate deal like that. So that's, we're kind of walking, we're walking this fine line, and our intent is just to convey to this council, you know, what our concern is and what the concern is of other people in that area, just so you're aware of it when you make your decision. That's where we're at right now. And, you know, I think we'll seriously take under your advisement engaging in more conversations with the council. We have met with the code enforcement officer and talked to them about what could be used on that site, so we've done some initial, kinda just figuring out what's, you know, what's allowed on that particular parcel of land. So that's where we stand at this point.
Thank you, Michael. Anything else? Nobody? Thank you again, I really appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Chance, just do the things that I just wanted to make clear.
Sure.
Go right ahead.
Go right ahead.
Okay.
So just a couple of things to make it clear that we're not part of the town of North Yarmouth, and I think most of you understand that, but just to state it publicly. We're our own quasi-municipal district. I have reached out to Rosemary and both town managers. I haven't spoke to Rosemary, but I did speak to Nat Tupper, who's the town of Yarmouth. There wasn't any offer of assistance monetarily, but, you know, he's concerned about the aquifer as well, 'cause it does supply the communities. Once I speak to Rosemary, you know, there'll be that short conversation, I'm sure, as well, because budgets are usually a lot tighter for a town than it is for the district. I mean, we, ever since this came to, on our table in our radar screen, we have been trying to prepare for this, you know, and just kinda waiting for the moment when it comes online. So we are prepared to make a strong offer. And I knew there was a fine line here, and I hate, I don't wanna see this be adversarial. You know, we respect everybody here, and I understand that the land swap too, there might have been some misunderstandings there and just kind of a closed door, but we're definitely willing to work. So just wanted to lay that out there, that there has been some conversations, so it hasn't, we're not just in our own little bubble. You know, we're trying to reach out and work with others as well, so.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, guys.
Next, please.
Good evening, folks. My name is Sean McCloy. I'm from Cumberland. Two very quick items. One, I just wanted to express my gratitude and appreciation of the council as a whole, and especially the councilors Foster and Story King for jumping so quickly on a fairly emotional discussion at the last meeting. We, all of us Cumberland residents really appreciated the way you all listened and had a good head about approaching this from a non-biased perspective. So thank you for taking quick action on that item. Item number two for me is, when I spoke last time, I spoke about the community that we all live in here in Cumberland, and I just wanted to tell a quick story. On a Sunday, I was bicycling over Route 1, got a flat tire, and had about a three-mile walk ahead of me to look forward to, which I didn't mind so much, but in walking up Tuttle Road, no less than six people stopped and asked me if I needed help. Asked if I needed tools or a cellphone or something, and they didn't have to stop, they didn't have to do anything, they didn't ask which political persuasion I was from, but they were part of the community, and I really appreciated being in a community like this that looks out for each other. So I just wanted to go on record and say that I appreciate Cumberland for that. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Anybody else? See, nobody going to the microphone? We'll close the public discussion then. Thank you. The next is to hold a public hearing to consider and act on accepting older road as a town road. Mr. Town Manager?
I'm gonna be a little bit long-winded, and I apologize, because in the end, what staff is recommending is to table this item and refer it to the finance committee. But there's a lot of reasons why behind that, and I think it's important that the council hears them, and the representatives from the neighborhood that also have requests of the council to hear our consideration as well, so we would be good, the entire finance committee as well as the town council could hear that, because I'd like to be back in two weeks and have this resolved.
So as I explained in a previous council meeting, the developer, Ben Grover, through Walmart Capital Investments, basically developed this neighborhood and built the neighborhood, and basically, after the planning board approved it, the next day sold the lots to Mont and Gray, who built the home. During the same period of time, Ben's attorney, who's helping with the documents for the project, was fighting his way through, and eventually passed away. And a lot of things got missed in the follow-up process between the notice of decision and planning board, and approvals required, and some of those things basically ended up also in our file. I have been under repression, as we typically do, in all subdivision recordings that we recorded at the reg d p, that we basically list, not in this one, that all local and state programs must be complied with, including DDP. And if there's an HOA agreement, we've noticed that there's an HOA agreement with the subdivision must be complied with, and all notice of decision elements are followed to. We usually have language, in some regards, a little more relative than that, although we sort of find, and this plan is not. We've also been thoroughly, basically, the title documents for all the lots, Inc. of the telephone, this specifically, the HOA requires under the DDP, two of them listed kind of not served yet. We have reached out, we, Ben's attorney, have reached out, and Will has reached out to the title companies and said, you know, how can we, how can we, we have no HOA? So what I will share with you, and I believe in all honesty, that homeowners bought into the neighborhood that they felt they were very excited, it was a beautiful neighborhood, prices were right, a lot of people enjoyed it. But they also didn't want to be in HOA, they didn't want to be regularly to what they could do and what they couldn't do with the home. And those of us who live in those types of neighborhoods understand that's the need we want to do today, but in the past, it wasn't always this way. And I think that the impact, many years, or greater, before we did, but a lot of my neighbors are 30 years old, and we have HOA, it's a drainage committee, and it's dead. I didn't want to, I was pretty adamant that this was going to be a drainage committee, and not entirely decided to show this coming, which it's, as it tends in the meantime. So I was very sympathetic, and Alan Will and I tried to work with the neighbors and tried to get through them. Carrie, Carrie was here tonight. She and I both kinda went from different angles and tried to work with the DDP and asked them if they would accept a drainage committee, and basically, the drainage committee would somehow decide each one of the lots, and it would only bring in the drainage, the detention pond, and some of the vegetated stuff, so in the neighborhood. She got a hard knock, I got a hard knock, and we were both kinda looking at each other and saying, "How do we get beyond this?" Because the majority of the neighbors really don't know what they're gonna do. So, reading the approval letter of the DDP, it basically said that we cannot accept the lot as a town road until an issue around the drainage maintenance is addressed. I reached out to the DDP, it said, "Age Throat has agreed to make the retention pond, that basically, it was a year, and beyond any other instructions, and we'll be with the neighbors." And they signed that, and signed that agreement, and we were ready to go. They said, "Well, I don't know that Age Throat is gonna be in business condition." So the frustration that both of us came to was that, I think, my recommendation to the council would be that we accept the detention pond, we make this a detention pond, we allow Age Throat, all through his game, to screen. We allow A. H. Grover, all through his drainage, to screen, and he takes it, and that gets us through the DDP piece. Uh, the town attorney has agreed that with those elements, and the easement, uh, from Carrie and her, uh, their, uh, that the town attorney is, that she would be willing to send out another board. So, this is all news from all of you, including some here tonight from the neighborhood, uh, representing the neighbors. And, uh, I thought it was important that you guys all heard the same information at the same time. So, um, long way around it, uh, I would recommend, after your testimony from, um, two of the neighbors tonight, about some of the other issues that we had to share with the council, uh, that we table this, send it back to the finance committee for a favorable recommendation on November twenty third to appeal to the council. We've been waiting almost three years now to get this treaty for road acceptance. It checks all the boxes for road acceptance, acceptance, it meets the road acceptance ordinance, which is the only ordinance you follow, and asking for a public road to be accepted. There is no guarantee that road gets accepted by the town council. It's totally up to you. Uh, that's why I think when Bill is here, he will basically, every single time. And Bob, there was a new bill, that's okay, that's okay. But just remember, the road is built to town standards, which is always intended to be a town road. And the development has never waited for that. Uh, more have been, more have been my understanding of it, that it should not be a town road. And those discussions are usually made very, very early in the council. So, um, with that, um, I think I have a little bit of a question.
Quick question, Will. Have we had a breach on that retention pond?
Oh, terrible, terrible. It basically wiped out the entire potential pond and put a hole, I think it's like a picture to the drainage channel.
Right.
What was done after the fact, it was all run by A. H. Grover of his entire process, with the DDP review and with, uh, CD and RIS oversight. Uh, that thing is built, uh, probably the way it was built that first time. Uh, if you were there, uh, the night that the pond was left to the max, and terrible wet next to it, it honestly looked like it was from a tunnel. And it right into the basement, the elevation was probably less than six inches from here. So, um, that, um, breach over that pond basically washed, it didn't have a smooth way like you normally see.
Work with him. I think it's in his best interest to make it right and be a good developer. You know, last meeting I watched, you guys had mentioned you were having some issues with yours and you mentioned that a developer was a problem and you even said we should hold his feet to the fire. I'm asking you humbly to please help us out, hold his feet to the fire on this one and just say, hey, you know, we made a mistake in the beginning, let's make it right, let's help these homeowners out and do what they need done, set up their HOAs, set up their initial fees, do what they need to do or if it does come down to the agreement, just set up the drain water agreement with DEP, pay for any initial costs or fees. I don't really think it's a big ask and I hope that you guys can get on board with that and help us out.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Carrie. I also live on Fuller Road. And Chris, I think just pretty well explained the situation that we've been dealing with here for the past three years. I want to thank Bill for all of his help to kind of... Sorry, I'll take this off so you can hear me back. His help that he's provided us throughout this process. We have been really diligently trying to get this sorted out since I think last November. We all met in this room with Ben's attorney and we just saw no forward progress. You know, in this, as Bill mentioned, Chris has mentioned, it's been very frustrating. We just want to know that our road's going to be maintained. I think the homeowners are all on board for the most part with doing their part and making sure that this is all followed. But we just, I think my main concern right now is what happens if it snows tomorrow? It's going to be seventy degrees, but you know, maybe next week it's going to snow. And what happens? You know, we're just always in this limbo of we were told one thing and then now we can't get any, you know, it's not in our hands basically to make this right. I feel like we're kind of, every time we think we have it figured out, there's something new that happens and we can't make forward progress. So I just hope that we can get to a point where you guys do feel comfortable with taking over our road. I think that is really the resolution that we're all looking for and we would be very happy.
Carrie, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any other questions, Chris? Thank you.
Just for clarification purposes, the HOA presented to you that... Chris, Chris and Carrie both presented to you that if there is a requirement for the HOA, that those teams can be advised by the developer. From just from a clarification standpoint, I know the developer will most likely go after the town companies to do that. So as long as that deed isn't on the public address, you don't feel that bad. I don't believe that, and this is just my opinion, it would be fair to basically hammer the developer with additional personal insurance fees. I honestly agree with Chris, but we don't have to do that and that's why you have pilots. The word is about my daily work, but we do, we said we do, that's why you have pilot insurance and that's really actually important. I'm hoping the HOA can work entirely with the proposal, I don't know, with the finance committee. The owner has signed, already signed drainage agreement. Carrie and Mary have agreed to basically allow easements to the town so that we would have the ability to build a property maintenance. Our agent, who we, we, who we signed, we would, we would hopefully be responsible for it. We and our contract relationship with the town and the, the easement is with Carrie and her company to the town companies. So all of that would be covered under our insurance and we would basically, Ben has agreed to. It is and the detention cost may be a little bit bigger in this room. It's like this, the access is easy, it's very, it's not a big ask. It's less than just what I can describe. I think the DEP would be manageable to that only because the town companies can be here for a while and their contract there is not. You know, that will have to see. Will there be any other problems?
Thank you. Any questions, Bill?
Bill, I think ultimately in two weeks when this comes in front of us again that we probably will end up accepting this road. And I've seen this road for the past three or four years unplowed and I'm thinking to myself, how do these people get out of their driveways? If it happened to snow in two weeks, can the town legally plow it before we accept this? And I'm just asking for the neighborhood, I mean.
Yeah, it's a great question. It's miraculously, we're going to probably have to maintain it for emergency use for the purposes for the next two weeks just because we're not sure we might have an emergency.
And I'm just asking.
I think we have a contract will be coming down the road, where it's only two weeks away. I just, it would be a lot easier. Ben has told me personally, he will maintain it until it's acceptable. Personally, I'd like to start off the season, probably finish the season. It's a lot easier for the plow guys to get it into their system, it's a lot easier to get it out. It's a very easy project. A lot of trucks at the rate today and going out and all the different things.
I hope it stays seventy degrees, but I don't think it will.
No, I agree. I think it's easier for us to start off the season and pick it up and return it to the state.
And another reason I ask, you always see the town glove and they put stakes where there's basins and stuff like that. I mean, I just think it would be, put us ahead of the game if we went down and looked at it before it snowed rather than after.
The road is nice in a certain way, it's perfect.
Right.
We can easily find the red bases, but we usually mark the center line of the hill and show where the basins are and left them out so to find them and figure out how it's freezing. I have to, probably have to drive it. The six red bases are up there, I think we've been doing it.
Okay. Bill, your attorney is recommending that we table this item, too?
Yes, and I'm recommending the table and send to the finance committee. Until we get the, Carrie and Mary to get the agreement in place. That's the last document we have outstanding. If that's in place, we already have the green agreement. We have, and Ben, they also have a call in the DDP. They're assuming they're hard known because they want something to put between the town and the road.
Just a couple of comments. I empathize with their position. The one thing that bothers me is that I see nothing, no documentation from this process from the planning board that this was ever going to be a public road. The fact that there is homeowner agreements on ten of the lots suggests that there is, was not going to be a public road. I'm not aware of homeowner agreements in, you know, on public roads. I've taken fifteen years on the planning board, however many years I've been in the community and watched it, it just doesn't ring through to me.
They are, my, my, the building's thirty years old and it has an HOA who is named with the intent. And it's really, really, so we could actually, we could, we could, we could, we could, we could. We're required to do it under our HOA, we're, it was under the HOA.
I'm willing to waive the Bill style. It's like, I want to go on notice that I'm, I don't favor this.
Let me just change things a little bit for you. In these subdivision rules, they basically mention that roads, if built to town standard, can go to the plan, can go to the council for acceptance, but there's nothing that requires the council to accept them. After we did that, and this was after we went through all the private roads that we had all over town that became public easements, we basically said, we need a road ordinance to say, this is what you need to do because we were relying on the planning board. And if you got a planning board approval of a public road, it was almost a rubber standard. But there was no set of standards. Now the standard is they have to have an as-built plan, they have to have a two-year maintenance plan, which we never had before. They have to have the town attorney basically review warranty deeds and everything else that comes over to us. We had never had that before. That's all in the road acceptance ordinance, which is controlled by the council and no one else. So that's what changed, probably a dozen, somewhere between eight and ten years. And I'll get to that in a second, but that will change to make it hard and fast. If you want the road and it's built to standard, here are the steps you have to follow. We had a road next to Newtown, I'm a, I'm a part of it, that meant all of us came, checked all the boxes. Initially, when they came to a, who's the one who wants to be a private road? And after decades of being a private road, they came to the council, said, can we be a public road? And we said, well, let's examine the plans, let's do some tests, make sure everything is built to standard. They were built to standard and council agreed to accept it as a public road. So that all came about because we have a new road acceptance standard that you can't get off. The next road, on the first side that, Lady, I'm losing this.
Lady?
No, very close to it.
Very close.
Thank you, name's Wesley. Perfectly built road, a couple of curves, won't make it, the width isn't quite as wide. They came to us and said, and we said, sorry, you need to change all of these things to make it through that road, to become a public road, to accept. And they basically said they want me to do that. So they had to ride the road out on a couple of feet and change a couple of the curves and they said, no, we can't do that. So we said, then we can't accept it as a public road. So the public road standards that are in place is the subjectivity of the planning board confirmed for subdivision, where am I? And we said, this is what it has to be. And I, I think it's been a good process, it's really laid out how we accept roads really clearly. And before, I was kind of wishing, watching it was, and the planning board didn't say it's going to be a public road, it was a public road, it basically said, you know, we're looking at council. This is very, this is first of all, you want a public road, this is the order that you go ahead. So it's, it knows a group question because those folks that have been doing it a long time, it's not the way things used to be. It's been done very differently in many ways.
Bill, give me your answer.
That being said, our acceptance of a road is a cost to all the taxpayers.
Absolutely. We will have that cost at the next meeting, Chris, all the places we think that we have.
We'll overlook it this time.
Above the cost of the road, we may not be able to, we'll have it at the next meeting, but.
Thank you. Town manager is recommending that we table this, do we have a motion? I move to table. George, second. Further discussion, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, the next item is an update on projects by, from the assistant town manager, Chris Bollock. Chris?
I was hiding due to the road acceptance thing. I was having a little post-traumatic stress there, so. What I was going to show you last meeting, we've got four major projects going on in the town and best case scenario would be for these projects to start in June and me to be here once a month to give you a briefing on each one of the projects, but due to some permitting delaying and the world we're living in now, all these projects pretty much started in September and this one just started today. So I just wanted just to zip through and just show you the projects, show you where they're at because I don't think a lot of you have seen it. It's gone so quickly and they just kind of landed here and we've been running around in circles since they got here. Just going to walk you through, this is, this is a before picture of the rear of Public Works. You can see where all the buses park around the building of Public Works. This is a picture that was taken last week. All the buses got moved up to the fairgrounds due to construction and this is, this picture's taken in the exact same spot as this picture before construction started. And you can see there's a bus island, all the buses are going to move to the center. This is just a closer shot of it. You can see the construction of the Public Works garage in the rear. And this is just taking a look back towards Village Green. This is the view where the, where the brush dump was and the brush facility was. Again, this is a before picture, I just wanted to give you an idea of what the facility looked like before. There was a hay storage area, this is all compost, this was the venting for the landfill. The venting got moved, everything got torn down and cleaned up. Again, another picture to the rear. And then the infamous salt shed, this is a picture taken last year of the salt shed and this is what it looks like now. The salt shed's gone, we've got a lot of good positive comments from the residents of Village Green. This is kind of giving you the big picture. As you can see, before the buses used to go around the building. Now we've, we've got bus parking in the rear of the building with an island for plugins. This is the addition to the bus garage, the compost area, all the brush and everything. This is where all that was, that's getting recapped and landscaped. This is the civic lot, right now it's being used for storage, but eventually that'll be reseeded and brought back to its original state. And just another view, somebody remember we used to have that cold storage building that was in this area? The original plan was to tear down the bus garage and then move the cold storage to where the bus garage is. Due to cost, we decided to tear down the cold storage building and we're going to keep the bus garage for cold storage, with just some simple renovations and cleaning it up so it looks better on the outside. So that was really, I'm zipping through just to give you just an idea where we're at and that's, that's where we are as of today with the Public Works building. The building itself isn't going to get delivered to us until the middle to end of December. So this is going to be a work in progress and they're going to be re-siding the existing building and everything right through the winter. We will be moving the buses back after Thanksgiving, so it's going to go right back to a working facility.
Chris, before you go too far, we, go back, go back. The contractor meets every Thursday and eleven o'clock on site. That's the time they basically, we usually upgrade. If you remember when we did the fire station, it was the same thing. They had a one o'clock meeting and finance committee meeting. The finance committee is welcome to attend those meetings to get more involved in that. It's not an ideal time of day for the three of you in your prom schedule, if you have an idea. So the three of you are welcome to attend. I know Bob is going to be back in town, it's going to be tough, but perhaps in the winter months it might be easier. And Allison, I know in your schedule it's a couple, smack in the middle of the day, so. But just know, just reach out to Chris if you want to be at that meeting, just to let it know. It's on site right now and part of the weather's warm and when you ready to go after it starts to cool down. Lots of hope that we can be in a requisition with Chris.
Correct. We'll, we'll meet in the bays and there's also this, this is the bus driver meeting room and we also utilize that as well to go in. There's plenty of places to be, there's going to be a lot more to see back in December, the end of December when the building's erected and there's a shell and probably more enjoyable to walk around and give input at that point in time. Right now you're just looking at dirt getting moved and everyone kind of running in circles. Bill loves that, he doesn't miss those. The, this is the salt building that I showed you that used to be up here. We relocated it to Greeley Road. It was originally supposed to be torn down as part of this project and it was going to be a scrap pile, but in looking at it and the manager and I discussed, how could we reuse this because by taking down our cold storage, selling the gravel pit, we really had no place to store anything. And we're, and our, our goal was to move as much of the stuff we could off-site at Public Works to make it look like a cleaner look. So we looked at our site over on Greeley, this is Greeley Road Valhalla. You can see, this is just a Google Earth, I apologize for the, for the picture, but this was the original site of the maintenance building at Valhalla for years. And since then, it's just been a pile, drop-off place, storage area for brush, gravel, sand and everything for the golf course. So we decided to repurpose the building and we cleaned up the site and decided to move the building over here, the salt building over here, as a storage building. We make the mistake, I keep referring to it as a salt building and I've been misquoted as having a second salt shed on Greeley Road. I will say that this site was developed by our in-house engineer. We looked at all the piles and decided that we really wanted to make it more organized, a cleaner look, so we put blocks in, we paved it and we built a berm to basically shelter it from the golf course and make it not look like an industrial site. So this, this cover is going on, actually going on starting tomorrow. It'll be a green cover, it'll be enclosed and there'll be a combination of equipment from the golf course and from Public Works and maybe some hay storage. We also moved, this is the snowmobile building. This had to be moved from Public Works. This is the new site of the snowmobile building. They were involved in the process, so we made sure we had good turning radiuses and access for the snowmobile club. It sits right next to an existing trail that goes across Valhalla, so it was really a good place for it to go. I just wanted to share this because this is the view up from the golf course. This will all be vegetated and so it's not really an eyesore if you're playing golf at Valhalla to look over and see this. It was probably more of an eyesore when it just had piles and brush piles. Now for the new salt building, this is the access road next door on Stiles Way.
And I apologize because this is just more history lesson for myself. What's the plan for Greeley Road and sidewalks? I know at one point, I guess more related to what you're doing here, this comment is related to, right, we've always had big talks on Tuttle and that's always been our main focus. The shoulders on Greeley are so narrow and right, I, I thought we talked about at the town, to right, make this full loop from Twin Brooks, right? So for people walking and having this loop, is that still a viable project? And I guess speed now that, if you're going to have larger vehicles and trucks on Greeley Road?
It was in the CIP last year and it still is in the CIP. It's probably the next big project we have on the horizon. We typically try to space out the big projects, something between five and eight years. We're just, we're getting along with the rest of the projects. And I guess with the, this is probably, but that, that is, that is the plan to basically put, put paint shells in one road. You think you sidewalk cross for Greeley because you pay Sheldon, you can still use the hand spaces and you still, you don't have to have an employee to any system. Every time you add a sidewalk, you're basically putting a furrow in people, you're adding a type. Sidewalk costs itself, you know, it's, 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 it's.
But it's still on, it's the next big one, okay. The speed on that road and the, clearly, that, that's my normal drive and run and walk and everything. And that Twin Brook, I just, the, the cross-country kids, the soccer kids, they're all running on that road and there's no shoulder, so. Okay, and now there's going to be bigger trucks, that was more my, that was my prompt, okay.
It's one thing with this facility for us, it's gated, but it's, it's really going to be primarily accessed by Valhalla, through Valhalla. It'll be a once, you know, maybe a once a week stop for Public Works. It's really clearly just a storage area just to put stuff and we didn't want to just pile it up, so we wanted to make it clean and that's why the manager decided to, we put bins in and we, we put a berm up and kind of sheltering it. So it's kind of hidden but not. It just got pushed to one side. This is the access road, Stiles Way. I just want to put a, it's not televised, but I just wanted to plug it for Bill. This is the construction of the new sand salt building. And this is the construction complete. We had a forty by sixty building, this is an eighty by a hundred building. They just completely finished it today, so we're right down to the wires. We've ordered salt and we're going to start filling it. Wanted to give you an idea of the size of the inside of it. You really should go down and take a look, that's my truck inside and it's, it's got a space for one of the big trailer dumps to go in and deliver salt and sand. Inside. And this is so big because now that we've, we've moved our sand salt location, we're no longer grandfathered, so we have to put the sand under the roof too and we have to mix it inside. Whereas before on, up here on Drown Road, we didn't have to, have to do that. So it was just really just a salt building. And this is the big picture, this is what the facility looks like now. A lot of this stuff off to the side, it's, it's going to be cleaned up, organized. We had to get everything off the Public Works site and we only had about forty-eight hours to do it. So we had to put it down in here. This is which, this is the brush pile, this is your composting facility. This is some buffering that we put up on this end for the house, the old alpaca farm that sits off at the other end. There's also a berm on this end, I don't know if you can see it. There's a berm up further that's, that was done during the construction of the, of the access road. I put this in because this is what we had discussed in our original planning board application, is tucking it into a corner here so we could try to hide it. For the most part, it, it does hide it. If you cross the railroad tracks just before you get to Nelmer, if you look through the pine trees, you can see it. The only clear shot that I was able to find, so I knew it was going to be a question, is right here on Tuttle Road, this is just beyond the Nelmer building. And that's about the only place I could actually see the building and I had to slow down and come to a stop. So it is pretty hidden where it is. When you drive up the access road, you don't really see it until you come right on top of it because of the tree growth around it. So it's built, it's ready to go and that is it, that is it on the projects. I was going to put some pictures of this, but it just started today and figured if you really want to go in and look, we can go behind the plastic and take a peek after the meeting, so. I just wanted to give you an update where this has just moved so quickly and like I said, in a perfect world, it would have been better to give you monthly updates to show you the progress, but this is just moving so fast that we're hoping to be moved into everything by spring. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Chris.
You were the town manager, any updates on the library? The stone, the machinery work done? Have they started that?
They landed there today just to repair the front wall, the front wall. I've got power to the building now and I'm hoping, Bill, do you, I think next week? He was going to, he's going to have to tent it and we had to get power to it and he's going to have to heat it and then start the work.
Any questions, Chris?
How are we on relative to budget? Is everything, are we under expected?
Everything is, the sand salt building came in within budget. The Public Works has been some give and take, we've had some add-ons, but we've had some deducts. So I'm kind of hovering right at the break-even point right now, but it really comes down to the nuts and bolts when we get the building up and then we start and define different things that we have to do. We found some unexpected issues with some plumbing in the addition, in the existing building where we had cut some of the cost out of this project. We cut the renovation of the old building, so a lot of this was tied together, so we found some snags with trying to connect old with new. Right now, we're, we're within budget and planning is staying.
Chris, you're going to have a snowmobile trail on Stiles Way?
There already is.
There is?
It comes out, comes down a ways on Stiles Way and then goes off and then crosses the road down by George Smith's house.
Thank you. We made a ramp about two hundred feet from the gate because often through, off to the, parallel to the road and then there's an opening right next to the sidewalk with a main floor. That's where it's going to be across the way. I don't know how much longer that's going to be alive. And I'm just wondering if it's possible. And we're, 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 and 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 we're, continuing to be in close contact with the community. It just, it basically said, this continues, we're going to come back to meet and have a discussion of the public versus, this is, and, and, and. Again, it was, it was restricted seventeen minutes before the, 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 the. It's one of the major connections that we need to be able to follow and, and, and.
Any other questions, Chris? Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. The next item is to hear a report from Councilors Foster and Story King about how to facilitate community healing and support discussions related to social justice with respect to opportunity for all. Shirley?
Um, all right, let's start. Shirley, jump in. So after our last meeting, we very quickly, the two of us came together. I think maybe first point is, we're gonna have Counselor Eads join us as well?
Yes, yes.
Shirley talked to you about that, right?
Yes, no, no, Shirley.
So the three of us...
Years of history.
Yep, so that's one, is team of two has quickly become team of three. And I think what Shirley and I are, and wanted to share with you guys is more our proposal of approach and really seeing it being two phases at minimum. And really, first phase coming out of last week's discussion is, we can't really move forward in resolution or solving or how do we do this until we clearly as a community come around together to move forward in trust and respect and understanding, but in feeling safe, right? I think that that was a big thing that came out from last week's discussion. So we are kind of exploring, because none of us really have those skills to really do that, and what we feel would be an appropriately unbiased way to facilitate that discussion. So we're, we'd like to explore outside parties that can facilitate for us that type of discussion. And then phase two would be about bringing now to say, okay, how do we, how do we move forward in the pledge we made at the end of August as a municipality in coordination with all kind of public units within our town, inclusive of the police department, the school board, and kind of what, and other outside community members to then say, okay, what does this mean for the town of Cumberland when it comes to pledge against, you know, or in support of social justice and equity? So that's like the big picture of, phase one is the healing, which we don't feel kind of capable, fully capable to facilitate, and so exploring outside options there. And then phase two is then actually coming together to say, what does, kind of, moving forward in the pledge we made at the end of August? What did I miss?
No, I think you were right on, Allison, and when I was trying to share with George before the meeting, what we were talking about, he's like, healing? What do you mean healing? What does healing mean? And it was a great question because I love those kind of questions that put me on the spot. What do we mean by healing? That's just more rhetoric. You know, we don't want to approach this with more rhetoric. And I think, looking at my notes, I had it, my thoughts were a little better organized, but what we mean is, you know, sort of conflict management and resolution. You know, how do we reach a point of resolution in the conflicts that have transpired in the last few months within our community in a way that people feel heard, you know, that someone just doesn't shout over one another, that we come to a place, I'm a middle path kind of person. I wanna, you know, I'll hear you, I might not disagree, I might not agree with you, but I want you to know that you feel that what you said is heard. We'll disagree with methods, but we shouldn't ultimately disagree with the policies we enact moving down the road as far as making sure people have opportunity, opportunities to feel safe and respected and that their voices are heard. And it's really important to me, I mean, that's why I reached out to Mike, is that our conversations are really open, and it's really risky, you know? I just can't even imagine what it must feel like sometimes with the rhetoric and some of the hateful language that gets spewed forward, what it's like to be a white man in our culture, you know? And I, and that's not to diminish social justice or Black Lives Matter or anything. I think that our, it's gonna be really interesting to hear the conversations moving forward. How do we talk about race and justice? And I would prefer to use terms like justice rather than injustice and, so, respect and opportunity. We've had some people reach out from the community. Annika Cole has reached out, she's had, she herself has some experience with community mediation. We haven't been back in touch with her yet, that might be one of our first steps. What does community mediation look like, you know? How do you get people to the table? So thoughts? Because we really want...
I have a question of, of both Allison and Shirley. We didn't bring this to the council. And don't get me wrong, I'm all, I'm all in here. I like to make it real.
I know, yeah.
I'm all in.
It was a great question, Mike.
We didn't bring this. We didn't cause this. The school board came out with an awful, poorly-written statement, horrible, and a lot of people took offense to it. And some people stood in line, other people stood in another line, and we are where we are today. But the school board caused this bubble again, and I guess I'm just looking to ask you guys, you two, why are we picking up the pieces? Why do you feel it's necessary at this level and not across the road?
Mike asked me when I spoke to him on the phone, he said, what's in it for us? You know, why are we doing this? What's in it for us? And I said, absolutely nothing. We'll probably throw ourselves under the bus a million times. I probably have already tonight. But I think there's a lot to be had for our community, for moving forward, for being, continuing to be an exemplary community within our state, and to continue celebrating residents who stopped and offered to help fix your bicycle, you know, without fear and without, I don't know, I guess...
Yeah, I don't know how to say it, right? I mean, there's no financial, there's no, you know, I guess you'd say maybe there's no financial, but this goes the wrong way, those housing values could take a dip, so maybe there is financial, right? Because we're not viewed as a community that is inclusive, that, and when, and inclusive means inclusive, right? That there, that everyone on all sides feels safe in expressing what they feel and why they feel it, right? And I think that the comments that Shirley made around kind of rhetoric, and I think that's kind of where we're coming in, is we can't move forward with the pledge that actually as a council we made until we do step one and involve, I agree with you, Mike, that, you know, technically, you know, maybe it's not our fight to get in the middle of, but it's impacting some work that we as a council said we wanted to do. So that's, you know, like Shirley said, you know, leaders lead, and so I think we're asking the council and proposing that as a council, we say, all right, it's, we gotta do this, and we can't do it alone, so school board, please, right? That's what we're saying, is this has to be kind of all of the leaders in our community being part of it, but we're, we're kind of saying the three of us, with your support and collaboration as well, would kind of bring that together. But, I mean, it's a valid point, but at the same time, I think we as a council have an opportunity and should be leading in this way.
Allison, don't take my questions as anything more than a question.
Oh, I, I know.
If it's not, I stayed there, like I said, I'm all in.
I know.
And I just wanted to hear what your thoughts were, so, just, thank you.
I think a lot of the process moving forward will be education, educating each other, and I, you know, one of the things I, we had a Zoom meeting with the manager, I thought it was gonna be a quick one, it was an hour and a half, because we just get hung up on language, what sort of language are we using? But one of the things I said in the meeting, Mike, was one reason I wanted you there, I know police officers have had bias training. You cannot have been a police officer for forty years and not have had some training in bias and implicit bias, and so your experiences in our conversations will help us understand what's there, you know, rather than blanket stroke all police officers as biased, you know, when, I know, just like a teacher, I've had hours of bias training. And so we need, we need a bigger picture than just the people who were speaking to us at the last meeting.
And I think that's cool, right? I think part of our pledge as a council too is about wanting better coordination, right? Because the school board can't do this by themselves because it impacts such a large part of our community and the rest of the community, so I think it's almost, that was, that was probably a bit of a weak link in their whole approach, was not a more coordinated community effort to begin with, so I guess our reset button.
Good. I just want to congratulate Shirley and Allison for spearheading this. I think it's one of the most difficult problems that we could face. And part of the reason in my mind is that it boils down to definition and heart. You can have all the bias training you want with a police officer, if his heart isn't in the right place, that training may reflect itself so he doesn't get a demerit in some way from the department, but it isn't gonna change his tendency to do something that probably shouldn't be done under various circumstances. I think about the fact, I'm seventy-four years old, when I was a kid, we used to take mercury, Tom knows, we used to take mercury and roll it around on our hands and, it's a poison. And we fooled around with it and, and so, this is a mercury problem that is, is a serious problem potentially. I think, fortunately, I think our community is, for the most part, intact along the lines of being morally responsible, and I think most people don't see themselves as part of the issue, so to speak. But having said that, there are plenty of people who don't see themselves as part of the issue who have trouble talking about it, and I will count myself as one. But I think it boils down to trying to come up with definitional, uh, stuff that can be accepted by, by two sides of a situation emotionally and, you've just got a, you've bitten off a tough, tough deal. I'm all in, just as Mike is, but I don't pretend to have any answers, I just wanted to throw it out that I admire you for even thinking about it.
Thank you for that, George. One of the, one of the terms, I think you're exactly right about how you define it. We're trying to define what it is we want to do for our community. What's our end game? Because I was starting with the old, you know, planning backwards as a teacher might do, you know, I want my students to be able to do this, so what do I need to do, planning backwards for them to be able to get there? So since our meeting, I've just been sort of reading up on our, reading articles on what is systemic racism? And systemic racism in the northern part of the United States is different from systemic racism in the southern part of the United States. And, you know, that goes back to the nineteen-sixties when President Kennedy helped out with the riots in the South and releasing prisoners and, but that's very, it's, it's just complicated. It's complicated.
But education, I think you said it, that phase two really is, starts with education, not to teach, but to ground everyone, right? Because I think you're absolutely right, that if we're not speaking the same language, we're gonna be talking at each other in these, we have to be talking with each other with a common language, with a common interpretation of what these words are intended to mean. And so that before, so, so yes, we've talked about that in phase two, but we're, we're pretty focused on phase one needs to happen soon, but in order to move on, but you bring it forward. Thank you.
Anything else?
Fair is mad, isn't it, Tom?
I didn't tell you. It's, it's a difficult task, and I do appreciate your time.
So a difficult task. I guess I'd like to see an outline of something, so I'd be now in our next meeting, of where we might think we might go. And I might suggest, uh, add my two cents, I don't see us being a referee for any particular group or organization. I see us sitting down and, and this happened to be on the table in front of me here tonight, this, we sign on to a statement made by the Chamber of Commerce, and so I guess our action plan ought to be somewhere aligned with what this statement was, that we all agreed to, and how do we, how do we, how do we bring those conversations to the community? How do we engage community members? How do we invite them in? I was thinking while you were talking about the different organizations in this community, and, you know, we have some churches, we have Lions Club, we have the Farmers Club, there's organizations in the community that we should reach out to and, you know, make sure that everybody's got a voice and a dog in a fight, I guess. Anyways, that's, that's my two cents.
I should also say, I'll be joining, am I in an M, is it Monday tomorrow? They're actually doing a session on inclusion and diversity for municipalities, and, you know, that it's training, which appropriately I've gone through, but at the, like, the last sentence was, and like, what does this look like for municipalities? So we'll be able to kind of share, get hung out of that tomorrow morning, for example. I'll share that as well, that term.
Anything else, if you can say? Here you go. Uh, we go to new business, Mike?
Yeah.
Everybody's square? Yes, please. Yeah, for, for sure.
My name's Sean McRide from Cumberland. I sent you a letter on eleven-one. Chairperson Gruber, sorry to hear about your mother-in-law, my condolences. I was unfortunate you had to experience that sideshow affair on the twenty-sixth. I've lived here for twenty-two years, I've raised with my daughters here, and I've been a good citizen here. What you saw on Monday on ten-twenty-six was a microcosm of our society. A person willing to risk the truth, risk it all for the truth, and others attacking that person's character because they know they're violating, violating main law, MS-8051 policy, and appropriately using our tax revenues. They hide behind equity training while attacking freedom of speech. It was cancel culture on display, and you'll see more of this. I've been working to try to correct the multiple wrongs from the Equity and Inclusion Committee Superintendent Jeff Porter and the school board for five months. I've been hand-selected to start a main branch of no-left turn in education because of this very situation. What you've been aware of or been witness to is secret and illegal meetings by MS-8050 school board officials, an Equity and Inclusion Committee hand-selected, made most entirely of Democrats, with a specific left-wing agenda. Jeff Porter splitting the community right down the middle in six-two with a white supremacy letter, and he's done nothing to heal it since. Fiscal irresponsibility, Allison, you mentioned what's in this for the town. The school board has spent tens and tens of thousands of dollars on training teachers and also hiring socialist and anarchist companies, and now have hired and have partnered with a Marxist company. A school board chair who doesn't follow their policies and doesn't know them and freely admitted as much. A school board chair who praised CCI, the socialist anarchist company... A school board chair who praised CCI, the Socialist and Anarchist Company, for setting the foundation of training at MS-8051. No public comment nor school board vote on the association with USM, including the Marxist Black Lives Matter Organization and Ibram X. Kendi, who is the butt-head I mentioned last meeting. School board abuse affording their own personal agenda in a public position. Withholding freedom of access requests, indoctrination, cognitive dissidence, and righteous indignation. Acceptance of one school board member's free speech and the retaliation of my free speech. Jeff Porter illegally withholding my rights as an American to the First Amendment, including free speech, public protest, and the ability to redress grievances, having me personally removed from the ten-nineteen school board meeting by the police. This is all for asking them to follow their own policy and public comment, which I'll get to. Slendered by public officials towards me on eight-twenty-eight in a letter to Chief Rumsey, to Chief Rumsey, the ten-nineteen school board meeting and then the ten-twenty-sixth town council meeting. As you may be aware, the First Amendment forbids government officials from retaliating against individuals for speaking up. Essentially complete totalitarianism by the school board. The school board opened the door with their fiscal twenty-twenty-one goals to allow you as the town council and the town manager to now have an opinion on this topic of equity. That's why you're now included. I handed that to you, uh, last meeting. So now it's on your plate. Um, and what I would say is the perception of equity where quite possibly very little exists. The goal back in June was to bring together a group of individuals in an open, public working session moderated by an independent person, agreed upon and hired by the town of MS-8051, uh, in the town in MS-8051. One is properly vetted to not have an agenda in this conflict. The process rejected, was rejected by MS-8051 in June under the guise of COVID-19. It's pretty interesting how MS-8051 and the town has very different philosophies on how handling COVID-19. So I propose we look past the previous slanderous, slanderous allegations and my First Amendment right violations and focus on the situation at hand. And I may have some recommendations on who I would like to see at that table, including myself. Racism exists, but so do many other biases in our town, state, and country. In my opinion, devote more of the town's resources and tax dollars to this effort is a big mistake. We have more issues with seniors trying to pay their high taxes than we have alleged racism issues. We have more issues with stock in the food pantry than we have in alleged racism issues. I'm sure you know more about that than I do, so certainly you need to kind of work through it on your own. For more information, recently Superintendent Jeff Porter sent me a letter. However, he doesn't really realize that illegal rules are unenforceable. What he sent was, "As superintendent of schools, it's my duty to enforce the policies and rules of the Board of Directors." Yet he will not enforce policy BEDH, public participation in school board meetings. And he basically said, "Unless I'm recognized by the chair, I must not engage with any other conduct that interferes with the board's conduct to the meetings. If I fail to comply with these expectations, he's going to ask a law enforcement officer to remove me from my premises and the district may request that the district attorney's office file criminal charges against me. Additionally, any further inappropriate conduct will result in my issuance of a trespass order removing me from all school-related activities and MS-8051 property." Essentially what Superintendent Jeff Porter is trying to do is say, "Sean, if you continue to have a dissenting opinion, I will not allow you to see your girl's graduation in June." That's cancel culture, folks. That's exactly what's happening here. So, um, I'll, I'll provide you this information. Um, it should be an interesting eleven-sixteen school board meeting. I'd recommend you all go. You really should attend to see how they run their meetings compared to how you run your professional meetings. Also, I'll be asking for- So maybe I'll have a rebuttal to whatever you say after, okay? Um, I'll be asking for a substantial tax refund this year and providing a payroll analysis that'll be very detailed comparing MS-8051 and the massive inequities compared to the town employees. You'll be very, very interested to see this. I appreciate your time and, uh, I just wanted to hand you some of that information.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
So I failed to have a prepared speech tonight cause I was caught off-guard and thought this meeting was two weeks from now. But-
What do you mean?
Uh, I'm a, a white man who lives in Cumberland.
Point of origin, please. We have asked people to identify themselves as to who their name was and where they've lived for as long as I've lived in this community. And there's a certain protocol before you come to the town council and I'd ask the chairman to enforce that.
I agree.
Well, yeah, so I guess this is also the first time probably since you've been in this town that you have someone threatening, uh, the neighbors once you give your name and address, then they put it on their website and then mailboxes get destroyed or they come, you know? So I'm just not super comfortable doing that. If, if we had a, if this was, if you guys were outspoken against aggressive and harassing behavior, I'd love to say who I am and, and, uh, where I live, but it's not a super safe place to do that right now. Because you, you have failed to come out and it's, I totally respect Sean's right to come and, and say what he needs to say and express his opinion, absolutely. We all should be able to do that, but we should not be subject to harassment. It's not okay.
I, 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 I understand your position. We had public discussion at the beginning of the meeting and we're under new business, which, um, frankly, I think the, the board, the council needs to examine its policies. Uh, nobody should feel threatened here. And-
I agree.
I, I, I would personally escort anybody home or, or, you know, it's, it's, uh, I'm astounded that, that, that comment has come up.
What comment?
I'll, I, I think we'll give the gentleman the, the opportunity to speak, but I think fall with this, that the, the board, the council needs to have a discussion on how we proceed, uh, in the future.
Well, are you aware of what's, of the behavior that's going on?
I'm aware of one person's, uh, approach to a situation and I, I'm, I'm not, uh, certainly not condoning that, but I'm not, uh, I'm not, uh, aware of, of things that, that, anything else.
Okay. Well, um, I guess it's probably worth bringing up. So, so there's a woman named Andrea in North Yarmouth who's been a target of Sean's online harassment, uh, regarding the equity statement. Um, and right after they posted her name and address online, her mailbox got destroyed. Uh, it also should be worth noting that she's Jewish and, Jewish and has a black person in her family. Uh, did Sean destroy the mailbox? We'll probably never know. But we know it's not a coincidence that after her name and address is revealed by Sean and his buddy in, in, uh, Portsmouth, New Hampshire, uh, that the mailbox gets destroyed. That's not a coincidence. And if the cops turn a blind eye to that, uh, and we're just gonna let Sean and his vigilante army go around town enforcing his political views for anyone who disagrees with him? And then, I mean, like, who wants to live in that town? Like, once, once this hits the papers that nobody did anything because some guy was really upset about anti-racism and you had all these warnings, like, I mean, it's just so, yeah, I don't know. It's just disappointing not, for, for you not to speak out. I know many of you agree with his views and that's fine. Like, we can all have different opinions on this, but we can't enforce them through harassment and people feeling unsafe and, yeah, I mean, it's just not.
True. I've been trying to get to the bottom of these allegations of this harassment and I am present on social media, so I didn't see that, what, what you're referring to. Um, and we have no jurisdiction in North Yarmouth. I just want to make that clear. Our police do not go to North Yarmouth. Do you know if the sheriff's department was called?
Yeah.
And was a complaint filed?
Yeah.
Okay. So, what I, what I tried to make, um, clear at our last meeting is there are some things that are going on that might need to be handled in a civil court or in a criminal court and those are not for us to legislate.
Absolutely, yeah.
What I would like and what I think we would like is to move forward and not keep going back and forth with, you know, you can say what you need to say and Sean can say what he wants to say and we're not gonna sit here and defend the school board or condemn the school board. That's not our job here.
But you've already condemned the school board and their, their statement, but that's like-
What do you mean?
I'm not, I'm not asking you to do that. I'm just asking you to not condone behavior that is obviously disruptive and harassing and unacceptable. Cause by not saying anything about it, just because he might share his political views or, um, you know, that's just not comfortable for anyone involved on either side of the political spectrum. Like, we all want freedom of speech, but we all also want to feel safe in the community. And I do want to say, I'm glad you're, you know, forming, uh, you know, some sort of committee to address this. I think that's a great first step, uh, and I hope you keep doing it. And I do appreciate you doing this work. This is like, you guys do a lot of work in this town and it's super helpful, so it's very appreciative. I just, um, I guess the, the silence against what's been going on is, is definite.
So, I, I just wanna, so two meetings ago, I made a statement, so before this exploded, right? Made a statement and fellow counselor against the act, the right that people should feel free to express themselves, but that violence, harassment, verbal, physical, emotional, are not tolerated in our community, community. So that, that statement was made prior, the meeting right before the last one. And so I do take some offense that there are members of our community, perhaps who didn't read the minutes, perhaps who didn't watch the livestream, who are, who are thinking that the council has data pass on this and we haven't. It's, our statement was kind of already made and so we're hearing and so we've kind of made our statement that that, this behavior isn't acceptable. It's not what our, our town and please chime in if others feel, feel differently. But to Shirley's point, I think we're at a point to say, we've made the statement that the behavior, while potentially, you know, not against the law, right, have responsibilities and those responsibilities have consequences. And so as a community, we're saying we'd like to be more responsible and how do we as a council facilitate responsible conversations from all sides and all parties? That's what we're moving forward.
Okay. Well, thank you.
I, I would just, I would just add this. I'm seventy-four years old. I've lived in this town for forty-some-odd years. In fact, with a break, more like fifty-some-odd. Cause I went to Greeley back in nineteen-sixty-three. I'm proud of the fact that I was, remember the first basketball team that won the state championship for the town, which, but it was a much different game in those days. But having gone through all of that time, I have to admit to you that I was totally, and I am on social media to some extent, I haven't seen any of this. What we hear from that podium has to come with some evidence of some kind. And even if we have evidence of certain things, we are at a court. We can decry harassment, we can decry unethical behavior, we can decry behavior that isn't decent. It comes down to common decency and courtesy to, to each other. But the problem with all of that is that isn't something that we can do anything about. We can, we can tell you that we sympathize, but then I guess we haven't shouted that loud enough at this point. But other than that, our hands are tied, other than to try to do something that was fortunately, uh, fostered by Ms. Foster. So that's, that's my, but I have to tell you, I have been oblivious to all of this other than what I've heard from you and certain other people coming to the podium. I was even oblivious to the sign up there, you know, on Sean's property. Uh, and I drove by one night just to, just to take a look at it. The problem is that there isn't any law against certain things and we can, we can, uh, we can tell, tell people that we feel sympathy for them, but it doesn't make us a bad community. And it doesn't mean that most of the people in this community don't care. And the fact is, we are the safest community in Maine. That goes a long way. And this stuff just has come up recently and I'm upset about the fact that it has come up at all because I've been here and had an association with this town long enough so that it's, it's, it's almost weird that it would be coming up now with social relations since I went through the sixties with the John Kennedy era and so on. Um, and I realized what things were like then and it, I'll tell you, it's a hell of a lot better now. But again, I don't think the council needs to be chastised for our attitude because I think it's a universal attitude of sympathy for anybody who's harassed.
Good evening. My name is Lorraine Reardon. I live on Oxford Lane in Cumberland. Uh, we moved here last August, so we've been here for a little over a year. Um, you, some of you might remember my husband and I sitting in a September town council meeting. It was obviously a slow night. We were the only ones sitting here. Um, and-
Appreciate that.
Yeah. Um, because we were excited to be part of, a part of Cumberland. Um, and, um, you asked us if we had anything to say and we were like, no, we're just happy to be here, happy to, to, to watch the process unfold. So, thank you for your service. Um, this is a place that we chose to, to live. We do not necessarily have a dog in the fight. I, our kids are grown. Um, we left them behind in Virginia and Maryland. Thank you. We have peace and quiet now in our house. They have launched. Um, but, so we don't have the insight that some of the folks here have, um, as far as the school board goes. Um, but I'll speak to you also as a first-generation American whose parents immigrated from Germany after World War Two, having survived, um, a regime that was pretty horrific, um, in, in the, the, um, history of the world. Um, and I would say that, um, what we're, what we're missing, um, in, in the discourse that I'm hearing in the community is people are talking past each other. And I think that, um, Shirley and Allison, um, and I'm sorry, Michael, you've joined, thank you. Um, you have a tough road to, to have that conversation about civility, which I think is what we, we came out of the sixties with. I'm fast approaching my baby boomer turn of age here soon. I'm one of the younger baby boomers. Um, but I think that, um, we have to have some crucial conversations as a community and recognize that, um, there is diversity, maybe not diversity of the color of people sitting in these seats, but diversity of thought. And that is a form of diversity. And I respect, um, all of the folks that have come to these meetings and, um, use their First Amendment rights as I have many, many times. I've been to protests, I've been involved in communities and, and, and causes and whatnot. Um, but I think we have to have a conversation that is free of buzzwords, that are triggers for people to have a knee-jerk reaction and a gut reaction. We have to be willing as stakeholders in this community to put those buzzwords aside and have a real conversation about what it means to be a member of the Cumberland community. And so I think that I would like to leave you with that thought. This is a good place to live. This is a good place to raise your children. It's unfortunate that a year after we moved here that we are, we have become aware of some of the issues that are happening. I think that they're not insurmountable. And I think the reason why it has come to the council's attention, Mike, is because- And I think the reason why it has come to the council's attention, Mike, is because they brought it to your attention. Both sides did. I heard both sides clearly at the last meeting. So they both brought it to your doorstep, and now because it's here, it's incumbent as the leaders in this community to do something with that knowledge and turn it into something that's good for the community. Turn it into a crucial conversation that promotes understanding amongst all of the parties. But the first thing that you have to do is that everybody has to be willing to come to the table, to leave their baggage outside in the parking lot, and have a civil conversation about it. So, I leave you with that thought. Proud to be a member of the Cumberland community, so happy that we moved here, still happy, happy even after all of this, and I hope the road gets approved for those poor people. But anyway, thank you for your service, and as a former contracting officer for Department of Defense, if you need some negotiating skills, that is what I did for a living for seventeen-plus years, so happy to be of service to the, the folks that are gonna try and engage in this conversation. So, thank you very much.
Be careful, Lorraine.
I know.
When folks talk about civility, Shirley is well aware that I took that approach in this situation from the very beginning. I was extremely professional with Jeff Porter. I met with him in person, with Shirley. We had a great conversation, and honestly, Shirley and I walked back down to my house, and I forget who said it to who, but we said, there's no way they can't fire this company who states that they are a socialist and anarchist company. And Jeff Porter decided to back them to the very end. Now, first off, I've broken no laws. This has been five months, hundreds of hours of work on my part. I would consider myself an expert in the community regarding MSED-51 and their inappropriate use of tax dollars and their inability for letting community members talk at their meetings. As far as subject to harassment, I would love for this gentleman to try to define what that is, because again, I've broken no laws. Are people concerned about the four-foot-by-eight-foot sign I have on my lawn? Probably. But guess what? This is now being noticed, and it's being noticed nationally, that Cumberland isn't a bad place with this situation in the school board. The other piece is that essentially, I resigned as president of the Snowmobile Club and the Land and Conservation Committee because of the cancel culture that exists here in this room and existed last meeting. Now, again, for twenty-two years, I've been a solid citizen, and I've done nothing wrong, except for point out to the school board that they won't follow their own policy. So there's two ways that the school board is supposed to allow public comment. The intent is to allow fair and adequate opportunity for the public to be heard. However, when the school board has a, an agenda-based process, they don't want to hear from the community. So the first way that happens is during the time periods just before and prior to board vote on agenda items, like when they vote on their minutes from the previous meeting, they're supposed to allow citizens to comment. They're supposed to allow citizens to comment, so before they take a vote, you actually have a voice. They don't allow that. They haven't allowed it for years. And that's what I brought up in the last meeting. I brought it up two meetings ago at the school board, and again, last meeting. And last meeting, Jeff Porter decided to illegally remove me from that meeting. So I'm asking you to go to the next meeting, which I think is Monday night, and watch the show again, because I'm gonna ask the same thing again. And if he chooses to arrest me, then that's what he does. But I implore you that there, you're, seventy percent of our tax dollars is up there on the hill, and you don't control any of that. But when the school board, when the school board writes an invoice twice a year for you to pay them, we pay it. So as tax dollars, we're spending, again, tens of thousands of dollars on this initiative for irresponsible decision-making. So, all I ask is to be heard, that's all I've asked from the very beginning, and Jeff Porter has decided twice to put me and my family in harm's way, and then I have to answer the folks about things that aren't even fact. So, anyway, that's my rebuttal. I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Rick. Anybody else? Thank you very, very much. Mike, you had nothing? No business? I'm good, Tom. Thank you. Shirley?
Oh, I think I did. Oh, yes, I did. We have our newly-elected legislator in the back of the room, and I would like to invite him to the podium. Representative Moriarty, congratulations on your win. Let's hear what you're gonna do for Cumberland. Is that okay?
Sure.
Sit back down.
No, no, Steve, sit down. Sit down. Shut up, Steve.
I got that email to advising me that they called the podium tonight. I am Steve Moriarty from Twelve Oaks Street and was, I'm grateful for the election victory last Tuesday night, and will be a member of the one-hundred-thirtieth legislature. I can tell you, I can't tell you much about what's gonna be happening yet. I can tell you that I think last Friday, the Republicans in the House caucused to select their leadership. I don't know the results. Democrats on Thursday of this week will meet at the State House to select their leadership in the House. The Senate presumably is doing the same thing. The State House this coming year is going to be the Augusta Civic Center, and it's being outfitted, so to speak, to accommodate the full legislature, both houses, all committees, staff, public, press, lobbyists, everyone else who in the pre-COVID era would gather in the State House. And I don't know how, what, what it's gonna look like, and I don't know how it's gonna be run, and in fact, it's still a work in progress. People are still figuring it out, how the Senate and House will meet simultaneously. One body is much larger than the other and all of that sort of thing, so it's, it's gonna take some doing. And allowing the, how to integrate the public safely without causing danger to anybody's health, members, staff, the whole nine yards, is going to be a real challenge. I do understand, in a general sense, that the first couple of months are going to go fairly slow and quietly in terms of the House and the Senate as a whole, although the committees will be starting off, I think, in high gear and, and meeting fairly frequently. Notwithstanding the news today on the, on the Pfizer vaccine, I don't see that making any difference for the duration of the first session, which ends at the very end of June. There just won't be distribution available and maybe not final approval and whatnot. So I think we're gonna be the Civic Center for the entire first session. Next year would be a different story altogether. So, the, the House and the Senate were, remained in the control of Democratic members following the election. It's no change from what it was in the past year. The offices will be new, that may be, that may, or may not result in a different approach. A bunch of new people are coming in as, as freshmen, so to speak, because a lot of people were either churned out and some are simply not, not reelected, so we're gonna begin with an entirely different makeup as we get about our business. One unique thing about this upcoming session is that, as you know, we adjourned in March on St. Patrick's Day last spring, roughly four or five weeks before the scheduled adjournment date. At that time, there were some four hundred fifty, give or take, pending bills that were not addressed, but which had made it substantially through the committee review process, but all of that was left undone when we adjourned. Two attempts were made to come back in July in special session to deal with the outstanding materials and matters, so that the new legislature wouldn't have to deal with all of the old stuff in addition with all of the new stuff, which inevitably will, will come in. However, under the terms of the main constitution, a special, special session could not be called, and in fact, it wasn't. And so the new legislature inherits not only all of the new ideas that the new members are gonna bring in, all the bills that have filed, and there's, by the way, there's no limit on the number of bills that can be filed in the first session, but they'll also inherit some four hundred fifty plus or minus bills from the last session on which substantial committee work has been done, and yet, by committees who will not be identical to their successors because of membership changes. I don't know how that's gonna sort itself out. There's been no information yet, and frankly, I imagine that those who are in a position to know haven't yet themselves figured out a fair procedure to capture the work that was done before, but which was done in part by those, by people who will not be in the legislature this coming session. So I probably alarmed you and confused you more than helped, but it's not an easy situation. It is totally unprecedented in the history of the state. I don't know how they handled it during the Great Influenza when they came back in nineteen-twenty. Haven't seen any history on that, and I haven't dug too far, to be honest. But that's the only possible comber, the situation that, that I'm aware of. So, it promises to be really quite a challenge, and it's gonna take a lot of time and a lot of work. I am encouraged by the spirit, and sensing and hearing and feeling out there among the folks from, from both parties. And I think the commitment to get the work done is strong on, on both sides, and that's what we intend to do. If I could be more helpful, I'd be glad to. Would urge, I would just point out, I'll close by saying, Shirley, that, I guess I said already, it's a work in progress right now, what happens procedurally and, and otherwise.
Well, we'd love to hear from you, because...
Yeah, I, I intend, as best I can, to come to your meetings fairly regularly, particularly in the early months. When, when we have started and the situation is clear. Now, if I'm, if you see that I'm not here, it may be because the committee that I'm on, and by the way, I don't know what that's going to be, will be meeting on Monday night. I'll let Bill know, so that you in turn know why I can't be here. But as I look into, and we won't, by the way, we'll get sworn into office very early in December, but not actually start working until very early in January, which has always been the, the case. So my plan is to, to be here regularly every other week on Mondays in January or February, at least, if not longer than that, the work schedule up there permitting.
Well, thank you. Thank you in advance.
Anybody else have any questions?
Steve, I just want to say thank you. You know, you ran against a good man. Mike Timmich is a good guy.
True.
Mike would say the same thing about you. We have a long history of good politicians in this town, Meredith Burgess, my friend Dale Dale, Adele, and you, and you, your, your kind of campaign election is what really makes us proud.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mike. Appreciate that.
Anybody else? Steve, thank you very, very much. I would appreciate it.
I will see you.
I hope so. Better two weeks.
That's all I was curious about for new business tonight, Tom.
I have nothing.
Blue's in it at the Firehouse tomorrow, if you missed it in October. I was thinking, no, I was gonna be here, and I wasn't gonna say anything, but if you didn't get your flu shot in October, you can go, and if you have insurance, it's free. It was very easy and speedy, and my whole family did it, so.
George? I don't have much. I just want to reiterate the fact that as far as the property in North Yarmouth is concerned, we've got plenty of interest, and I think if I had to guess, I think most people's concerns in both towns, if they have any, will be assuaged with the likely end result. And if that's a little cryptic, I mean it to be.
Just one thing, I realize this meeting isn't publicized tonight on TV, but last Friday, I had a tow call out on the meantime by an elderly gentleman broke down in the Wilson Albion Line. I had one out there and responded, and the gentleman wanted to be towed to Yarmouth. So my record driver proceeded to Yarmouth. They got to Yarmouth, and he said, what's your address? And he says, this isn't where I live. And he said, well, we're in Yarmouth. He, yeah, but this isn't where I live. So immediately, he knew something was going on, and the gentleman was early stages of Alzheimer's. So he called me, and I called the Cumberland Police Chief here directly and told him what was going on, and I asked if he could meet at my shop. So he immediately sent one of the officers up to my shop, which got there before my record driver did. Upon arriving, the gentleman had no clue where he was. He literally thought he was in Yarmouth Cape Cod, Massachusetts. He had taken his girlfriend's car and drove up here. Thank God his car broke down, and it didn't just run out of gas. So Matt Merriman of the Cumberland Police Department bent over backwards to figure out who this gentleman was, and come to find out there was a missing persons thing out on him after forty-five minutes of research, contacted the gentleman's son, who was a police officer in Yarmouth, Massachusetts, who was ecstatic that we had found his father. He immediately was on duty, said, I will sign off, I will head for Cumberland, Maine, to come pick up my father. Matt brought the gentleman to the police station downstairs here and actually babysat him for three hours, and the gentleman called, said, I'm on my way, I'm four-hour drive to get there, and Matt got out of work at four o'clock, and he says, I'll meet you in Kittery. Matt took it upon himself to load this gentleman to his personal vehicle and drove into the Kittery Braden Post. So not all cops are bad, and I mean, I, just an outstanding outcome. I mean, and the gentleman, his, his son is ecstatic with the Cumberland Police Department and what they did, but just a good deed done, and I just wanted to share that with everybody.
That's a good story.
That is a good story. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any motion for adjournment?